Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's committees, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn your camera off and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committees and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I shall now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm present.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Cordell?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn?
I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Yeah, I'm here.
Councillor Rendall?
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
I'm here.
Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Apologies, Erin.
Thank you. Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
Here.
Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott? Bailey MacPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Lord Provost?
Here.
I've had apologies from Councillor Murray. Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Mrs Lake? No. Mr Chohane? Mr Baxter?
Evening.
Ms Barclay? No. Mr Anderson McGinnis? Miss Ishack?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. You just want to move on to the first item of business?
Yep. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I don't see any indications, so I'll take it that there's none.
Okay. Item two, parent, pupil and church religious representation on the Children and Families Services Committee. This is for approval.
Okay, so this is obviously just the update of the non-elected members who are on the committee. So first of all, just welcome John and Fatima to rejoining again for next year. But I think it's also important at this course that we thank both Cathy Mans and Katie Radick for their contributions to committee over the years, as they both have indicated that they will be residing their posts. And just, as I said, thank them for all their contributions down the years. It's always been supportive, even sometimes when they disagree with decisions that we're making. They've always done it in a constructive and really positive fashion. So what I thank them and put on record the thanks for their contributions down the year. And obviously their replacements will be coming forward at probably the next committee, once all the arrangements have been made. So I think that would just note that. Arlene?
Item three, Tayside Plan for Children, Young People and Families, 2021 to 2023. This is for approval.
Okay, so the plan's there in front of us. Councillor Crookshank, you wish to come in?
Thanks, convener. You'll recall that when this was first brought to committee, there was no financial finances agreed. Since then, it's been the Scottish government have given just under half a million pounds to the collaborative. And I'm just wondering, although I welcome the details provided in relation to the activities that are taking place through the regional collaborative, would it be possible for elected members to be provided with more details on the operation of the finances? They're not detailed in the report. And for the collaborative and perhaps even a briefing where we can understand further the benefits of this approach?
Yeah, I get it. Sorry, Councillor Crookshank, I caught you there for a second. No, Sally, I think we were always in intention that we would do a briefing at a future date and that will happen as soon as that can be arranged. But I don't know whether either Mr Clancy or Mrs May are on the call, who might want to answer some more specific points that was raised.
Happy to come in, convener, if that's okay. But just to reassure Councillor Crookshank and thank you for the opportunity to have a briefing and to talk through in particular, actually for this financial year, it's over eight hundred thousand pounds we've received for the collaborative and we'd like to show you how that's spent. And the majority of it is across staff that we've brought in to lead the work streams. But I think a briefing would be really helpful to go through the detail of that and we could get that organised as soon as. Thank you, convener.
Thank you.
No problem. Councillor Malone, you were next.
Thank you, convener. I'm looking at the report itself and I was drawn to some of the data that was on, in particular, page thirty-seven in respect of our commitment to GURFIC. I may be reading the data wrong, but what it seems to be suggesting that the number of children in temporary accommodation in Dundee has gone up significantly over the period of the review of the data. I appreciate there's no data available for 2020. And I've been reading a number of reports today, including reports by Shire, who draw a direct causal link with children living in precarious employment and educational attainment. So I just wondered if somebody could kind of say, first of all, tell me I'm reading the data right, but also give me a kind of an explanation of why this trend is happening, given that the other local authorities in the area seem to be having a trend that's going down. So I was just wondering if somebody could give me an answer on that. And also maybe in future, whether somebody could come back with an analysis of the performance of children in living in precarious accommodation when it comes to things like attainment rates.
Yeah, I'll just pass over to Mrs May, I think. Do you want to lead on this or is it somebody else?
I'm happy to take this one, convener.
Mr Clancy?
No problem. Yeah, thanks, Councillor Malone, for the question. I think the data you're referring to is the rate per ten thousand households with children or pregnant women in temporary accommodation. My reading of the data shows that over the last five years, where we have data, there has been a slight increase from eight point five per ten thousand to nine point two. It's the same as last year. As you say, I think the data itself hasn't been refreshed since 2019, although we certainly would take seriously the match for temporary accommodation. I've discussed this with my colleague, David Simpson, in neighbourhood services. And I think what we would need here is just a little bit of time to come back to you with a response and maybe have a look at what national averages are here. I accept your point about where you have temporary accommodation. That is not the greatest situation. The council works really hard to make sure we provide the very best we can for people. But I think at this stage, we just need a little bit more time to come back and answer your very specific question.
And perhaps it might be something that, once we have the briefing arranged, that might be something that we can pick up at that point if I can ask officers to ensure that that's one of the points that we pick up at the briefing and then obviously get the data back. Absolutely, yeah.
Thanks for that, Paul. And I see the data you're referring to as the number of children or pregnant women in temporary accommodation. I was more concerned about the rate per ten thousand children in temporary accommodation, which has gone up from fifty-three to seventy-seven, which is a significant increase. When you look at that compared to neighbouring local authorities, for example, Perth and Creossetts went down from thirty-four to six. Angus is fourteen to ten. Now, obviously, we're dealing with different populations, different circumstances, but it would be helpful to get some kind of analysis of this. And certainly I would be interested in seeing how it, when it comes to things like attainment, educational attainment and a number of other social difficulties that children in precarious accommodation face on a daily basis. So I welcome the commitment to the briefing and I look forward to getting some of that data. I do appreciate, Paul, that these things are genuinely difficult to generate overnight. And obviously, we would want to provide as much time as possible to get an informed answer rather than a rushed answer. So I look forward to that report coming forward.
Thank you, Councillor Malone.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Malone. I've seen if anybody else wants to come in. I don't see anybody else. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you very much.
That concludes the education part of the agenda. So we'll now move on to item four, which is unaccompanied asylum-seeking children national transfer scheme. You have a report before you.
Okay, I think this is actually a very, it's a very important report, but obviously some of the events have been happening in the last few weeks and months. I think it's even more important. So I think it's something that certainly, something that we certainly should be seeking to do. I'm just looking to see if anybody wishes to come in. Councillor Crookshank?
Thank you, convener. I echo your sentiments in regards to what's been happening over the past few weeks. Anybody with a heart, you know, must feel the pain that these people are going through and especially the unaccompanied children. I read within the report that it's a voluntary basis and that the council has undertaken to take some of the unaccompanied children. And I know that the council has a proud track record for supporting the Syrian refugees. And I would hope that that could be transferred to the Afghans as well. I'm confident that these young people will be very well supported by the city and given a warm welcome, considering the challenges that some of these young people will have had to experience in their lives. What will be the key priorities for the programme in advance of them arriving in Dundee? And could you say a bit more about the numbers of young people expected? Thank you.
Okay, I don't know who wishes to come in and answer some of the points, but I think certainly the points you make, Councillor Crookshank, are very well made. And certainly, I think as a city, we want to do everything we can to support these young people. But Mr Clancy, do you want to?
I mean, happy just to echo what you're saying and to welcome Councillor Crookshank's comments that you think this is an important step forwards for supporting these young people and that Dundee, as you say, has a proud history and reputation of lending support in the past. And I think it's right we do again. And if this report's approved tonight, we would like to join the scheme and offer our support as part of a whole host of councils that have been asked to participate and help. I think to answer the more specific question about how we would prepare for this and what's being done, I think again, I would agree with Councillor Crookshank with some of the excellent work that's been done with our council, with our colleagues in neighbourhood services and supporting Syrian families. We're looking to work closely with them and to learn from them, also from Perth. But I think if you're okay, I'd maybe ask Alison Lucas, service manager for children's social work, to come in. She's been leading on this.
Okay, thanks, Paul, and thanks, Councillor Crookshank, for the question. As you've noted, the young people will have had many challenges and will need multiple supports, not least of which will relate to aspects like language, education, their finances, their health, their emotional wellbeing, as well as how they socialise into their new communities through the establishment of a working group across all the agencies. I'm confident that if this report is approved tonight, that we'll be able to meet the young people's needs across all these areas. Also, as you say, learning from all the work that's been done to support the Syrian refugees. Alongside all these ongoing issues, our immediate priority would be to identify accommodational options for the young people. And we have been able to do that in conjunction with our colleagues in the third sector. So that allows us to, if the report is approved, to go back to COSLA and say that we are in a position to take young people from October. The young people will be allocated a social worker from the Children and Families Service to help them navigate their way through this huge move for them. So your other point was regarding what the numbers would look like for Dundee. So roughly, it would work out about two young people per cycle. And as a whole, Scotland will take forty-five young people per cycle. So if we take two young people in October, that means we would be probably the first or one of the first local authorities to go on to the ROTA, rather than being waiting to be given our slot. We'd be able to come forward and we would then not be asked to take any other young people until the other forty-three of the forty-five are successfully placed with other local authorities. It's thought that that would probably be again in January, February, that we'd be asked to take our next cohort, but that's completely impossible to predict just because of the amount of young people that have been coming through. So it's felt that the next six to twelve months will be very busy. We'll have the young people in October, young people again in probably January, young people again in the early summer. The summer months are always busier as well. So approximately, we're looking for Dundee, that would be between six to eight young people over this twelve-month period. It's expected that through the national transfer scheme, that that would allow the numbers to settle down somewhat. And in twenty-two, twenty-three, we would maybe be looking at more like two to three or three to four young people. But as I say, all of this is contingent on numerous factors, including other local authorities being able to come on board. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, Alison, that's great. Thanks very much for that update. I'm much appreciative of what you've said and I fully support what's happening.
And thank you. No, thank you for that, Councillor Crookshank. Does anybody else wish to come in or can this report be agreed? Okay, so this report has been agreed. Thank you very much. Okay, Arlene?
Item five, progress report on PAWS Dundee. This is for approval.
Okay, thank you much. So I think, Councillor Hay, you just beat Bailey MacPherson. So Councillor Hay, I'll pass over to yourself.
Thank you, convener. And just really to say, I welcome this report and delighted to see that we've agreed to fund this wonderful project for another year or so. And I had the privilege of actually visiting the PAWS project and I've got to see how impressed I was with the excellent work that had been done there. And I was very impressed by the staff and clients alike. The difference that the work of this programme makes to so many women is wonderful. And I would hope that in future years, we would continue, in many years to come, we would continue to support this project. That was all I wanted to say, convener. Thanks.
Thank you for your supportive comments and they're much appreciated. Bailey MacPherson?
Thanks very much, convener, and supportive comments continue in that, like Councillor Hay, I was one of a number of elected members who attended a very worthwhile visit to the PAWS project on the twentieth of August. And I think what was very apparent from that is the commitment of the team is absolutely superb. And the demonstrable benefits and outcomes for the first cohort of women was very plain to see. I think the report itself, five point one, clearly outlines what has been achieved thus far, despite, I have to say, the challenges of the pandemic. The women in the first cohort and now the new group in the second one are benefiting from PAWS. And they have multiple and complex needs, as the report alludes to. But I think PAWS is giving the opportunity for better, more fulfilled and positive lives for the women concerned. And I would say three cheers for such a wonderful project. I'm glad that we continue to support it. I think it's an absolutely excellent project and it was an absolute pleasure to visit the project a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you, Bailey MacPherson, for your comments. And with Councillor Hay, they were certainly much appreciated. I'm sure appreciated by the staff as well and the women involved. Councillor Crookshank, you're next.
Thanks, convener. I'll continue with the positive words and I echo the sentiments of Councillor Hay and Bailey MacPherson. Having had some initial doubts about this approach, it's been clear to me in speaking to the women participating in the programme. I mean, all women councillors had had an opportunity to visit the programme and hear from the staff and the participants. And I would like to thank the service for having the courage of its convictions and taking this forward under some considerable opposition. Would it be possible to have details of how further cohorts of service users will be identified and offered the programme to keep the good work going? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm certainly happy to provide that information as we go through the next phase of the project. And I was going to wait till the end till I said this, but I think since you just raised that, Councillor Crookshank, I just want to actually thank all the elected members. Because you said there that there was considerable opposition to the PAWS project when we first introduced it. And I think most of that opposition was nationally. But all the elected members decided this was a project that was worth, you know, doing to try and support a lot of very vulnerable women. And you know, often in committees, it's not always that we can say that as a committee, we've actually probably collectively done something that's been really positive and not had any kind of acrimony amongst ourselves, actually on something that was a very serious project and was controversial. The whole committee decided that this was something that was worthwhile and all elected members supported it. And I think it's important at this stage to acknowledge that as well, because it would be easy to bow to some of the national pressure that was going on from all sides, you know, not necessarily one side or another. And I think it's to the credit of the whole committee and all elected members that we actually went ahead with this project and we've now seen the results of the difference it's making in these women's lives. So I think we want to, at this point, just thank you all for that bravery and for taking that decision, because it would have been easy to bow to the pressure. And I really do appreciate the full support that all elected members have given this project right from the start. And I think it's helped these women considerably. So I just want to thank you all for that. But we will certainly get that additional information as we go forward to all elected members.
Sorry, I'm back on. I got cut off there, so I'm really sorry, because I'm happy to try and respond to Councillor Crookshank's question about the second cohort, if you wish.
Yeah, please do.
Just to add my thanks to what you've said, because this would not have been possible without cross-party support. It has really made things much easier for us to be able to concentrate on the programme. So on behalf of the officers, I'd like to thank the elected members for being so supportive throughout the process, regularly visiting the project. And I think we have felt your support, which has made it easier for us. So I thank, thanks as well from officers. Could I, if Derek, I have Derek on the call and I'm just wondering if Derek Aitken would like to answer the question about the second cohort if he's not been kicked out? Derek, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, hopefully. Okay, I'll kick off then with that question. So thanks for the question and I would also echo Paul's, you know, views about the support from elected members. It really has been so. We've obviously started the second cohort, but what we're doing with the PAWS programme is just getting it into the cycle of where the women emerge as being at that level of vulnerability. So I had a second child removed and that's for reasons. What we're about then is trying to get that helping at that point. And we've been looking with the PAWS staff to try and make sure that there's the other groups. We've looked at the possibility of care leavers who are in the situation of having had one child removed. We're looking at them to see if they would also benefit from this kind of approach. I think the reality is that the approach has been really successful with this very vulnerable group of women. What we're looking at is across the age range of them, around about childcare, around about kids to children, to make sure that as many as possible going forward can continue with benefit from that approach. So the outreach approach, the approach the PAWS staff have, they will try and find these women wherever they are, women on the either homeless or on the verge of homeless in some situations, sometimes with, as you'll see from the report, addiction problems, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just that bit about the benefit to them and in time of their children is obviously profound. So we're really going to keep on targeting, keep on offering and the support of the services.
Okay, so I think you kind of broke up towards the end there. So certainly what I'll maybe do is. I'm getting a bit of feedback, so I just, if you're not actually speaking at the moment, you actually just go mute. Just because I've got headless stuff coming back, which is never a pleasant sound for anybody. But what we'll certainly make sure is that all that information that Derek gave there will get sent out in an email form so that all elected members can see that for themselves. Because as I said, there was a bit of a breakup there with connections. So we'll make sure that information gets sent out to all members. Okay, and you're happy with that, Councillor Crookshank?
Yes, indeed. But I would also like to extend our thanks to the staff, because without the staff, then the project wouldn't have been such a success. So I think they should get a pat on the back as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. As I know, you know, I've met some of the staff previously and Councillor Smith has been certainly pushing this project very strongly as well. And the staff have done an amazing job with this woman and have made a huge difference. So certainly, if nothing else from tonight, I want to make sure that staff are aware that the committee certainly really are appreciative of all the work they've done and really supportive. And we'll make sure that message gets out to the staff as well. Okay, so I think, Councillor Rendall, you were next?
Yeah, thanks, convener. It was just really to echo some of your own comments about firstly, the fact that this was very controversial when we first put it out. And it might be easy to forget the distinguished academics in the main who wrote to national press and saying this was about women's human rights and we were taking them away and all sorts of things that, you know, it was quite hard to come back against, but we knew this was the right thing to do. So just to say, yeah, I commend everything that's being done and like Georgia, you know, want to extend thanks to the staff, because it's a difficult job and they've done a power of work. And this is about quality necessarily, you know, working on a one-to-one basis with people, which is a difficult thing to do. And so it might not seem a lot of people. So it might not seem a lot of people that, you know, have been affected by this. But when you take into account all the families, the numbers of children that have been prevented from going into care or maybe back with their mums now, it's an amazing project. So I'm in awe of it and I hope it continues for a long time.
No, thank you very much for those comments. And you're absolutely right. I think the support the women have had has been amazing. And as I said earlier, right at the start, this was a very controversial project. And as I said earlier, I think it's to the credit of the council that all elected members fully supported this. And we're seeing the benefits for the women, that the difference is in making their lives. And not just the women, but their families as well. So I think this is something that I think the council has really, really do want to say thank you for all your support with this project. With that, can this report be agreed? Okay. And I think that's the business for children and families. So thank you all.
Thank you, Convena. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this. Just wait for a short time to see people leave. Okay, Eileen, I think that's probably long enough.
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I have to declare myself a non-financial interest in item seven. And the deputy convener will be taking over the chair at that point, as am the board of trustees of the Museum of Transport. Is anyone else? Stephen, councillor Rome, please.
Thank you, convener. Also to declare a non-financial interest in respect of item nine. Tenders received as my son attends one of the nurseries mentioned in the tender.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. Can move on then, please, Eileen?
Yep. We've received a deputation request in relation to item five, Mill Street stopping up order. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
Can the committee agree to hear the deputation? I see a lot of nodding heads. I'll say yes, please. We can just go ahead with that. Who would it be?
Russell Pepper.
Thank you. Good evening, Russell.
Yeah.
Are you there? Yeah?
Yeah, you hear me?
Yep. Thanks very much. You've been here before. You know the routine. So I'll just let you crack on. In fact, you've got seven minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, cool. No problem. All right. I'll make it very short. So as you read in the report before you this evening, the proposed stopping up of Mill Street is an essential part of the planned improvements to the active travel infrastructure on the waterfront between Brody Ferry and Monyfeet. These improvements will create a very high standard of active travel infrastructure, which will encourage more people to walk, wheel and cycle along the route, which will help achieve sustainability goals for the council in line with local and national government policy. Council officers involved in the design of the route have taken into account the concerns of residents who have objected to the stopping up of the street and they have comprehensively addressed those concerns. You can see those in the report, so I won't bother going over those exactly. But suffice to say, they've been very, very comprehensively addressed. The fact is that we need to rebalance priorities on our roads and create a safe space for all road users. And that will inevitably, and in fact, it should involve deprioritising motor cars and prioritising active travel. Stopping off a minor street such as Mill Street in favour of active travel infrastructure is just one example of that kind of action. Everywhere it happens, the world over, wherever active travel infrastructure is proposed at the very often quite slight inconvenience to people driving, there's going to be objections. Every time, there's traffic chaos as predicted, increased emergency response times, increased pollutions, parking mayhem. List goes on and the predictions are very much the same. And the result, if the council is bold enough to go ahead with their plans, is always the same as well. There's actually less traffic due to people choosing instead to walk, wheel or cycle rather than take their cars. There's therefore less pollution. The roads are clearer for emergency response vehicles and for people who do need to drive for journeys. Local shops benefit from increased footfall and the city becomes more livable, healthy and safe. People in Dundee are also overwhelmingly in favour of active travel infrastructure from the Bike Life Report a couple of years ago. Seventy-two percent of residents support building cycle tracks that are physically segregated from traffic, even when this means less room for other road traffic. So this project aims to do exactly that. The council needs to be bold in creating the kind of city that people will want to live in, work in and visit. And the stopping up of Mill Street is just one small piece, an essential piece of what is to be a world-class active travel infrastructure project in Dundee. And it should be allowed to continue as swiftly as possible. That's my deputation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Russell. And I tend to agree with very much what you said there. I think it's a fantastic project. But the officers are going through the proper process here. So I'll put this through to elected members. Any questions? I don't see any questions. Okay, thank you for that. Can we just maybe deal with this as an extra item of business as per usual and just advise the committee services, if that's okay? Can we just go ahead and do that?
Yeah, that's fine. So that's item five, Mill Street, Brody Ferry, stopping up order 2021.
As we know, this report clearly details of so many responses from the consultation on the proposed stop-up of Mill Street. There was 28 objections. These objections went to resolve and therefore we have to go to the Roads Commissioner. And Heather's Sustainable Transport has prepared the report. Any comments? Any questions? It's going to be a quick night, thankfully. Thank you very much. That's all right. I've come for Duncan. I was going to do that though.
No, thanks, Convena. Not a questionary way, but just a comment. I think speaking for myself, but you know, perhaps most people, this is a really positive project overall. I think there's no doubt about that and, you know, keen to see it come to fruition. I'm sure it'll bring a lot of benefits, as Russell outlined, you know, to residents and visitors alike. The only thing that I would make by way of a comment, well, a bit of a plea really, is some of the neighbours, as it were, have been rather upset at what they allege is the lack of meaningful engagements about this project. Now, I'm not going to comment on that because, I mean, I wasn't involved. But it's just really a plea that on this and indeed other projects, that the key to success for the future is to try and take the public with you. That really does mean engaging with the neighbours.
No, thank you very much. I think we tried to do that as much as we can. I think the consultation on this particular project, in my view, has actually been very good. And the officers have had a fantastic job of trying to contact as many as possible. I'll bring in Mr McNorton just to comment on that, if that's okay, if he's there.
Yes. Thank you, Convena. Thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. I can confirm that we'll continue to liaise with the local community about the design. But the stopping up border, we have offered opportunities to meet with us and written to the objectors as well. And again, that process will be ongoing beyond the reporter's assessment and decision on this scheme.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Duncan?
Just to qualify, Mr McNorton, does that mean that consultations are still ongoing or have they been concluded? I'm not clear about that.
Yes. Sorry, councillor Duncan, just to clarify, we did try to, we wrote to the 28 objectors, the respondents to the consultation to try and resolve the objections. We were unable to do that. The next step is with the committee's approval to present this to the Scottish ministers to appoint a reporter. The reporter will then weigh up the benefits and the disadvantages of the scheme and make an independent assessment on that. Of some of the responses we did have from the objectors, a lot of them were in favour of an independent review of this proposal, looking at the all aspects of it. So again, I think there'll be support for that from those that did object. Once the reporter's made a decision, whichever way that is, we'll continue to liaise with the community on the design of it, depending on how the reporter's judgement goes.
Okay, it's just if I can just once again, Convena, thanks. Just so that I'm clear, if the consultation is still in process, if it's going to continue, I wonder if there might be some merit actually in deferring this item until the next committee's cycle in order that consultation can be completed?
Yeah, apologies. I've probably not been clear enough on this. It's two separate exercises. We've not been able to resolve the objections to the reporter is the end point to make a determination on this. From that exercise, the reporter will hear the objections which have been raised and we've received them and make a consideration of that along with other information which they will decide on. Once the determination on whether to stop up Mill Street has been decided by the Scottish ministers on the reporter's recommendation, then we'll be able to re-engage on the consultation about the design of the scheme with the stopping up of Mill Street or the design of the scheme without the stopping up of Mill Street, depending on which way the reporter views it.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thanks very much for that qualification. Thanks.
Thank you. Billy Scott?
I have a question as well in respect of the traffic management there, because a lot of objections have come in about the number of vehicles there and the route they'll now have to take to get away from the beach car park. And my question really is about how that will be managed going forward, if the stopping order goes ahead. If it's pleaded, it goes ahead. Will there be, focus for a short period of time, I think it was recorded, there was about, what, 800 and odd cars over a period went through there. So for the initial period, people will not be aware that they can no longer get past the car park now through Mill Street. Because currently, people who maybe want to go to the car park will drive along, see that it's full and carry along Mill Street in a way and find someone else to park. So there will need to be some sort of traffic management coordination in the early stages of this to make sure that drivers are aware of the new layout and where they can and can't park. And will that be in place once the works are done?
I would imagine they assume they would be. Well, just after Mr McNorton again, just to come back.
Yeah, thanks very much. Absolutely. The scheme, the completed permanent work schemes, if the Mill Street stopping up order is approved by the Scottish ministers, it will feature a lot of signage, both initial temporary signage in regards to the new road layout ahead and traffic management side is to make drivers aware of it. Again, there will be a period as well, if this is proved, to go through the construction phase as well, which you'll see diversion. So there'll be a gradual approach as the construction phase goes on. Slightly uniquely with this as well, the road layout will dramatically change from a visual appearance as well. So again, these sort of things will give benefit to driver understanding as well of the road layout system.
That's, that's your question, Bill Scott?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I tell this report is agreed? It has been. Thank you. And go back to the agenda, please?
Yep. So we'll go back to item two, which is Dundee City Council, Straven Terrace, Dundee, stopping up order 2021. This is for approval.
Quite clearly what it is, just a stopping up order. Any comments, questions? Take that as agreed. Okay, Eileen?
Item three, Dundee City Council, Charleston area, Dundee, stopping up order 2021. This is for approval.
Again, clearly what it says in the report. Take that as agreed. Thank you very much.
Item four, 20 mile per hour speed limit Windsor Street. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey McPherson.
I'll hand it over to yourself, Bailey McPherson. That's okay?
Thanks indeed, Convena. This is relatively short. Basically, at the time, spaces for people came along and at the request of a number of the residents in Windsor Street. I questioned why Windsor Street was excluded from the 20 mile an hour speed limit, particularly as it frankly fits on the end of it, that the street to the immediate east, which goes exactly the same length as Windsor Street, is included. And since then, I've continued to receive requests in that regard. I did ask at the time we were promoting the order in relation to making the 20 mile an hour speed limit for the area that is included, permanent, which is obviously going through the process at the moment, if Windsor Street could be added. And I was told the only way it could actually be done is if a separate traffic regulation order were prepared. Bear in mind that a traffic regulation order being prepared does not mean that it will be enacted because quite clearly there is a legal and consultation process and there could be objections to that. But I have done a fair bit of informal discussion with the residents of Windsor Street. And there's quite clearly a strong level of demand that is included. So my personal view is that in preparing a traffic regulation order, we're simply testing the water to see if there would be any objections. I suspect there would be little. And given the concerns, there's a significant number of older people and indeed young children in the street. I think it would just be a good idea to promote this and see what the public feedback and the feedback from such three bodies, of course, is as well on this. I do have a motion. Officers could share it, but it pretty much reads the same as the agenda note. So it simply would be to ask for the preparation of a traffic regulation order in order that we can go through the legal and consultation process. Thank you, Convena.
No, thank you for that. I think you've raised a point there with why it wasn't included. I think you'll ask Mr McNorton that one for the question to be answered. And maybe you can explain the situation around the whole place with regards to 21-hour zones. Mr McNorton, are you there? Still there?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. And thank you, Bailey McPherson. The Windsor Street was excluded from the Perth Road Area Scheme zone, sorry, the 20 mile an hour zone on the basis of the existing traffic speed. It's got an existing traffic average speed of 28 miles an hour. There was a consultation undertaken in 2016, which set the policy position for the council on 20 mile an hour zones. And it was to, it had a majority favour the consultation, which was accepted by the City Development Committee in 2016 to implement 20 mile an hour zones on a signage-only strategy without extensive traffic coming. In 2016, there was also the Transport Scotland Design Guide publication, which was produced in conjunction with the local authorities and Police Scotland. And really essentially that looked at the routine enforcement requirements of 20 mile an hours and where they are appropriate and where they're not. It did stipulate a speed of 24 miles an hour, pre-existing speed of 24 mile an hour. The speed required to introduce 20 mile an hour zone or street or speed limit. And again, the reason for that is that 20 mile an hour limits and signage typically reduce the traffic speeds by about two or three miles an hour to bring it down more towards in line with the 20 mile an hour speed limit. What we are looking at at the moment is if we did take it to consultation, you're right, it may not receive objections. Police Scotland may object based on the initial speed limit. But if we do introduce it on a signage-only strategy, the speed limit doesn't reduce significantly enough. So it only comes down to 25 miles an hour. There will be an expectation back on the council to do something about that. And realistically, that leaves us one of two options. First option being to reintroduce the 30 mile an hour speed limit or in terms of the introduced traffic coming, most likely in the form of speed cushions or speed humps onto the street. And again, that would then depart from the policy position agreed back in 2016. The policy position is certainly not flexible, but again, secondary considerations aren't really there with Windsor Street. Secondary considerations such as accidents, there's no serious recorded accidents, sorry, excuse me, no injury recorded accidents in the last five years at the site. It's also a steep gradient road as well. So if we did introduce speed cushions, it may introduce traction problems during the winter period. It also increases up road maintenance spend as well from the speed cushions. So there isn't really a compelling secondary argument to depart from policy position for Windsor Street to put it in as a 20 mile an hour street, other than though I do accept that it would make a more comprehensive zone.
Thank you for that detailed response.
Could I perhaps just come back on that, Convena, if you don't mind? My view is that we're arguing over the head of the heat in here. Four miles an hour is basically what we're arguing over. And I just want to make absolutely clear, I am not and none of the residents have an expectation of speed cushions or speed bumps or whatever, or any engineering works whatsoever. It's just in terms of a logical area. I fully accept that if this was nowhere near a 20 mile an hour zone, it would not be a street that we would immediately view as the first priority in terms of 20 mile an hour zones. The point I make here is it's actually adjoined to the 20 mile an hour zone. There's a real expectation on the part of residents. As I say, we really are arguing over four miles an hour. And what I don't think we deny is that it would result in a lowering of overall car speeds. And that's what I think I and residents would like to achieve. At the end of the day, in promoting a traffic regulation order, we are simply going through a legal and consultation process. And if the police want to object, they can. consultation process. And if the police want to object, they can. But the point I would make is that our local community police sergeant has been good on occasion in relation to enforcement. I fully accept it as light touch because of the extent, we've now got four new of these 20 zones. But as I say, I think we are slightly arguing over the head of a hat in here. There is no expectation of engineering measures. It's simply that you get a more logical end 20 zone, particularly given the street to the east is included. And also, there's an expectation on the part of many residents there.
Well, I wouldn't agree with most of your comments here, actually, but I'll pass on to Mr Presswood. He's put his hand up.
Convenor, many thanks. I just wanted to add something to Mr McNaughton's comprehensive reply. And that is the issue of precedent. If we did pursue the motion today and introduce a 20 mile an hour limit, and we then had to follow it up with engineering measures, as Mr McNaughton's highlighted, I understand that those measures typically for a street of this nature might be of the order of £40,000, which, whilst it doesn't sound a lot, if you put it in the context of the overall road safety budget, which is £150,000 per annum, it's over 25% of that annual budget. And as Mr McNaughton's highlighted, the absolute priority is for us to focus on areas where accidents have taken place, injury accidents. And I think that the report, which is on the agenda later on, absolutely explains why we target that precious resource at those areas of injury. And if you look at Dundee's performance over the past 10 years, we have been extremely successful in reducing that rolling three-year average. And I think we should all be proud of that. And that is policy driven. It's members setting a policy and clearly adhering to it. And I think if we were to depart from that policy, it would have very significant policy implications and financial implications to the council.
Thank you, Mr Presswood. Counselor Hay, I see your comment.
Thank you, convenor. Well, I'm happy to support Bailey McPherson and what he's saying. I do agree that Windsor Street would be sensible to make that a 20 mile an hour zone. It does adjoin Magdalen Yard Road, which I'm sure, as we all know, have had many complaints from residents over the years about speeding along that stretch of road. And if we were to introduce a 20 mile an hour limit onto that section, it would hopefully reduce speeding cars travelling along that road. Also, as Bailey McPherson rightly points out, several of the other neighbouring streets are also already 20 mile an hour zones. And it's just quite logical to try and have a degree of continuity throughout all of them. Anyway, thank you.
No, thanks for that, Counselor Hay. Counselor McCready, you have a comment as well?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. I think like Bailey McPherson and Counselor Hay, it's always struck me as a little bit odd that Windsor Street was excluded from the 20 mile an hour zone in the West End. And I think along with the rest of the Labour Group, you know, I'm in favour of a wider implementation of 20 mile an hour zones right across the city. And we just heard the Executive Director of City Development talk about us being policy driven, members setting the policy and officers implementing it. And I think that's really important. And with that in mind, I would say that I think almost exactly two years ago tonight, convenor, this, the City Development Committee on the 9th of September 2019, we called for an annual report on progress on 20 mile an hour zones in the city. And I know that a lot's happened. There's a pandemic still on the go and all that sort of stuff. And I know that a lot has happened in terms of progress on 20 mile an hour, not least the work that's going on in the Perth Roads and its adjoining lanes. But bearing in mind what was said earlier, it would be good if officers fulfilled the policy of the council and prepared such a report and gave us, you know, if we're going to have this sort of debate about what would be needed in terms of traffic calming and engineering, et cetera, it would be good to have that set out in that report that was mandated two years ago. So I think, you know, I've got an amendment to that effect, which I don't think is needed, but an amendment that includes basically what Bailey McPherson has said this evening, that we should consult on Windsor Street, but also that that report should be brought back and should be brought back on a yearly basis timiously to committee to fulfil the policy driven nature of this council. I think it's important that we do that. I think it's also important to see that things are changing, you know. I mean, I hear what officers are saying, but I would also remind people that, you know, that, you know, the Scottish government, the new Coalition Scottish Government in its cooperation deal says, all appropriate roads in built up areas will have a safer speed limit of 20 miles an hour by 2025. Now, and I know this is the bit that officers would be interested in, a task group will be formed to plan the most effective route for implementation. Now, I understand to some extent, that's what, that may well be what the debate is about tonight. But I would say, you know, I would like, and I'm certainly be supporting Bailey McPherson this evening. And, you know, I would, I don't suppose I need to move an amendment that says, apply a policy that's already the policy of the council. But if I do need to do that, I will do it. So I mean, I would like an assurance that we will get an annual report that gives us progress, that will allow us to have the debate across the whole city about 20 miles an hour, because frankly, this is, you know, this is, this is the way policy is going. We need to look at this. I understand the concerns of officers around whether there's a need for further engineering, et cetera. And there's also a need about our expectation. And I've certainly called on the police to, I mean, I understand they have huge amounts of calls on their time. But I think, you know, the people of Dundee have clearly supported for the 20 mile an hour zones. We need to look at how we can support them. So those comments, convenor, if I can get some reassurance that the policy of the council from 2019 will actually be implemented, I probably won't need to move my amendment, but I certainly would be supporting Bailey McPherson if I don't have to move my own amendment. Thanks.
Thanks for that. You mentioned a number of policies there. I think when Mr McNaughton mentioned the policy back in 2016, prior to my time, I think where other members are setting the policy, 2019, as you rightly say, there's been a slight pandemic, as you would call it, in between times. So I can appreciate the officer's difficulty in moving a number of things through. You have to surely appreciate that going forward. And I think that's something we really have to bear in mind. We are moving towards 20 mile an hour areas and obviously areas or zones. We're not particularly looking at particular streets, because we're looking to encapsulate a lot more people with the money we do have, Mr Presswood mentioned earlier on. And I think the benefits are clear to be seen. We do that in new buildings, new housing developments, standard 20 mile an hour put in there, they're putting 20 mile an hour. And the forthcoming report in item six, for example, there's annual report includes 20 mile an hour zones for currently being programmed and for to be programmed. And I think that's the important part. We're not ignoring what was said in 2019. The officers are getting on with it and the City Development team have progressed this. Mr Presswood, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think it was just to supplement that and to welcome members' interest in 20 mile an hours. You know, road safety is something which all the officers of the department are very passionate about. So I do welcome the support and also the national attention to 20 mile an hour zones, which is immensely important. Just to emphasise, obviously, one of the main planks of our Spaces For People submission was the creation of four new Spaces For People zones. And that was obviously covered in a report in May of this year. So there has been a lot of reports to committee, which touched on the 20 mile an hour zones. But I apologise to Counselor McCready if that fully doesn't discharge the remit fully. And we are happy for future annual road safety reports to call out the space, the 20 mile, 20 mile an hour zone content more, obviously.
Thank you for that, Mr Presswood. Just to finish off of that, and I would say that I'm not inclined to actually focus on Windsor Street, to be honest with you, and put 20 mile an hour TRO in place for that. I think we should actually stick to the policies in 2016 and look to continue what we're doing, which is mentioned in the annual road safety report. With regards to the other comment comes from McCready, I'm quite happy, as Mr Presswood said, to include in future annual road safety reports, a section based on 21 hour zones or 21 hours areas to be included within that report, if you're happy enough with that.
Yeah, I'm happy with that, convenor. I mean, I'd still, I'd still be supportive for what Bailey McPherson is saying. But I think certainly be making sure that officers do bring back that report.
Okay, that's two different things. We'll focus on Bailey McPherson's motion first. So if you want to, so you put a motion forward, Bailey McPherson, to basically what you're saying in item four, would that be correct? I didn't see it.
Well, I would like to sum up. Bailey Keenan's asking to get in.
Sorry, I don't see Bailey Keenan coming up. Well, Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for letting me in. I'm minded to support Bailey McPherson. I would like to see 20 mile an hour zones delivered much wider throughout the city. Obviously, in hearing from officers about the potential of this being a 20 mile an hour zone and perhaps having to spend more money, making sure that they get the speed limit somewhere in the region of 20 mile an hour, I would ask them to have a look at Hirstane Road in my ward, where they've spent considerable amounts of money, having to go anywhere close to 20 mile an hour zones, 20 mile an hour within the measures that have been put into place, and ask them what they're doing about bringing other measures in there to get closer to that 20 mile an hour zone that they're suggesting they need to do in Windsor Street, or potentially need to do in Windsor Street.
Thanks very much. Again, it's a different topic. We'll actually focus on one street. I agree with you. I want 21 hour zones to come into the site, 21 areas, not just focusing on one particular street. So, sorry, Bailey McPherson, I think you want to come back and sum up?
Just very briefly, I just feel that the officer's response exaggerates the potential of the budget being shot. There is no expectation, none whatsoever, of engineering measures. There haven't been any other point within the 20 mile an hour zone, or indeed the other three Spaces For People 20 mile an hour zones. The reality is this, this is a short stretch of road immediately adjacent to the 20 mile an hour zone. There's an expectation on the part of the residential community that they be considered for inclusion. It's not an unreasonable thing to test the water in relation to a public legal and consultation process. And we will feed back on the basis of what comes back from that. So I think it's a perfectly reasonable suggestion. And therefore, I would hope committee would support it.
Well, thanks again for that. I said I'm going to focus on actually bringing in zones and areas rather than focus on one particular street. I appreciate what you're saying. We're looking for feedback from Spaces For People. We'll be coming back through Tactan. So I look forward to seeing the information coming from that, the 20 mile zones have been brought in. But I think we'll just move to a vote, if that's okay, Ali.
Convenor, do you have a second there?
Do I have a second there? Good question.
I'll formally second you, convenor.
Thank you.
Counselor Dawson.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion by Bailey McPherson, seconded by Counselor Hay, is circulated. The amendment by the convenor, seconded by Counselor Dawson, is to take no action. Convenor?
Amendment.
Counselor Alexander.
Amendment.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Amendment.
Counselor Cordell.
Amendment.
Counselor Dawson.
The amendment.
Counselor Hunter.
Amendment.
Counselor Lynn.
Amendment.
Counselor Rendall.
Amendment.
Bailey Roberts.
Amendment.
Counselor Roe.
Amendment.
Bailey Sowers.
Amendment.
Counselor Short.
Amendment.
Counselor Smith.
Amendment.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Counselor Crookshack.
Motion.
Counselor McCready.
Motion.
Counselor McKervin.
Motion.
Counselor Malone.
The motion.
Counselor Mara.
Motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey Scott.
Motion.
Counselor Hay.
Motion.
Counselor Scott.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
I have a motion.
Counselor Duncan.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Amendment.
Counselor Ross.
Amendment.
So that's 12 for the motion and 15 for the amendment. So the amendment is carried.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next item, please?
Item five has already been considered. Item six, annual road safety report. This is for approval.
Area vehicles, can I? The Port Vice 2020 Road Casualty Statistics and also details location bent by incident and prevention for 20 mile an hour speed limit interventions programme for the current and future financial years. I have Counselor McCready first.
No, you don't.
Oops, you're right. I've got two systems running here, Bailey McPherson. One's running slower than the other. Apologies.
Well, you go first. I'm no bother.
No, go ahead, Bailey McPherson. That's okay.
Okay, right. I have two questions. One's in relation to appendix B, the other's in relation to appendix C. In relation to appendix B, I'm pleased, obviously, to see these particular new sites being brought forward. I'm just really wondering if officers could give some indication as to the speed with which something can find its way into the programme when there's a clear concern. I've raised a very specific concern following four accidents in as many months at the very busy junction of Balgy Road, Blackness Road and Blackness Avenue. There was a significant accident there just a couple of weeks ago. And to be absolutely fair to the team leader, Traffic and Road Safety, he and his officers have already been out, they've spoken with some of the neighbours who've raised their concerns about me, because this is, because this has been a repeated situation. And he is keen to bring some measures forward. What I was just really wondering from officers, what I wouldn't want to see is, this is a year down the line and nothing's happened. So I'm just really wondering what reassurance officers can give me in relation to how quickly, where there is an agreed route forward, and there appears to be, how quickly that can actually be implemented.
Thank you. Mr McNaughton, can you maybe provide the criteria or information?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, Bailey McPherson. The programme is flexible. It is noted in the footnotes that there will be some deferral. That's partly due to taking cognisance of the requirements for immediate action on certain things. I can confirm the Blackness Avenue accident cluster site that you referred to, we will be including that in next year's programme. As you had mentioned, the assessment came in late after we produced this report, but the programme will be adjusted to accommodate that next financial year.
I'm grateful for that. Now, I have to say, I'm grateful for the very prompt response of officers. It is appreciated. My second question has nothing to do with that. It's in relation to appendix C and exactly what we've been speaking about a moment ago, 20 mile an hour limits. But I'm really wondering, and you know, I have no problem with what's being proposed, what I am wondering is how these are chosen. I've been banging on about particular sites. And I'll particularly mention the Logie Estate in my ward, where I get very significant numbers of residents saying, we're ideal for a 20 mile an hour zone. Let's go back to your 24 mile an hour, you know, criteria meets that, no problem. And what I'm really wondering is, how has this arrived that they will have a quite clear methodology? And can we see that methodology in relation to other streets that, other areas, rather, that have been put forward by elected members or by the public? If we look at, for example, our roads programme and so on, it's all very transparent, unadopted footways and unadopted structures, very transparent in the way that that is decided. And I'm just really wondering, how are these ones decided? And how are other ones not being taken forward in the financial years up to 2027?
Over to you again, John.
Yeah, thank you very much, convenor. The programme's derived from inquiries that have come in. I wasn't aware of the Logie Street one. I'll pick that one up. The appendix C is a five-year programme that we've put in to give a forward view of that. So certainly scope to include in further ones for it. And as I said, we'll look into the specifics around the Logie Street. As I say, we are following the Scottish Government or the Transport Scotland guidance. It's a published document. It's entitled The Good Practice Guide on 20 mile an hour speed restrictions.
It's, it's entitled The Good Practice Guide on 20 mile an hour speed restrictions. And that does focus a lot on assessment measures and implementation. And again, that's the national standard that we are following for assessing, designing and considering 20 mile an hour zones. But I will have a look at the Logie Street Estate, sorry, the Logie Estate site that you mentioned and feedback to you direct on that.
That, that's, that's appreciated. That, yeah, just to be clear, I'm not talking about Logie Street, which would never meet the 20 mile an hour criteria. I mean, in the, the Logie, all the streets named after trees, Ashbank, Sycamore, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm grateful that you'll feed back to me, Emmes McNorton, and, and your responses appreciated.
Thank you for that. Councillor McCready.
Thanks very much, Convenor. And, you know, share some of the things that Bailey McPherson said, particularly about the junction of top of Blackness Avenue. Indeed, I think the, the recent accident he's talking about, I happened upon it, the aftermath of it and about an hour after it happened, it clearly was quite a significant event, particularly for those folk involved. So I'm glad that that's been looked at. And I think, you know, I think this report is, is good. I think there is progress being made. And I think, you know, back to the earlier point, I think, you know, the list of areas for 20 mile an hour is, is welcome. It's good to see that there is some progress across the city. I think maybe just showing some of the workings behind that would be, would be helpful. And I think that's kind of what I was asking for in a, when I was talking about a report earlier. I suppose my, my question on, I've got a couple of questions on this report. If I'm reading the report right, if I understand it correctly, I think 4.2 sets out what the performance, what the performance was meant to be. So it's comparing averages over 2004, 2008 with the current year. And if I've read it correctly, I think the, I think the city is, is making only one of those, I think the 10% reduction in the slight casualty rate per 100 million vehicle kilometres. So I think it would be helpful if, if, if that could have been set out slightly more clearly in the report, I think, so that we were clear what we were, what we were talking about. So if I could just get a little bit of more confirmation about that. And can I also just look at table one on appendix A, which I think demonstrates an actual upturn in casualties in 2020. Now, I think we should be pleased about overall, you know, overall trends being down. I suppose my, I suppose the 2020 thing would be, it seems counterintuitive that during lockdown, there were more casualties because you would have expected there to have been less traffic. And I think that's what we've reported in other places. So I just would like a comment on that and, you know, whether there's anything that we need, that the council needs to have a look at. You know, are there, are there any, are there any recent trends that are, that are causing problems that are, that are leading to, to some of those, some of those more recent changes, given that the overall picture appears to be sitting in the right, in the right direction? Because I think all of us want to make the city as safe as we possibly can for, for, for everybody. And so I just would like officers' comments on that. Thanks, Convenor.
No, thank you. You raise some good points and I certainly agree. We actually want to make this the safest city. We can make it, with the limitations we do have. Councillor, sorry, no, Councillor, Mr McNorton, maybe reference to the years and the 4.2 and the report one, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Convenor. The, it is slightly confusing, the measuring statistics. It's Scottish Government, national targets. And again, there's the reason why they do it over average years is to take out peaks, particularly as we've experienced in 2020. The, the graphs in the appendices, they do provide a slightly more graphical exercise, if you like, against the targets, which is shown in the stars against the bar marks. But in summary to your question, it was the four targets, two were made and two weren't. So the, the two that weren't were the, the number killed where there was three against the target of one, serious injuries where there was 49 against the target of 25 in 2020. And the two that were achieved were the child serious injuries, which were below the, the target, and slight vehicles, which slight, slight injury accidents were also below. In terms of the move up in casualties during lockdown or the 2020 pandemic experience, what we did identify from the statistics was the travel behaviour change peaked in certain areas. So the two prominent ones was there's a 50% rise in cyclist accidents, which rose from 14 to 21 in the preceding year, and double the motorcycling accidents. The one thing I would say is when we do have a look through the, the actual specific police reports and the accident details and go out and investigate them, every accident's unique and they all have a story to tell. It's not quite as plain and transparent as looking at trends, but the trends do paint the picture. And in this occasion, it has been the, the change in travel behaviour, which has led to the peak in accidents that we've had last year.
Motion.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Convenor. I mean, I think that, that, I welcome that, that comment, I suppose. And I know that, that there are a number of projects going on, you know, some of them still under construction across the city in terms of cycle lanes, et cetera. But I mean, I'm presuming that officers will, will keep that sort of information under review. And if there is a, if there's a feel that there is a need to improve cycle safety and make, take action, improve cycle safety, that, that, that reports will come back to suggest that.
I would actually expect that to happen, to be honest with you. I think the transport team, the safety section of that team do a very good job in monitoring what's going on across the city with injuries and accidents, et cetera. So I think it's important we actually do focus on that. And for reference, we'll make sure that the 20 mile an hour zone is included or 20 mile an hour areas are included within the future reports, just for note. The thesis is agreed. Thank you. Next, I'll stand back. From the next one, I'll stand back. What comes for Rome, come in.
Hi, Convenor. Sorry, Arlene, go ahead, please.
Item seven, Dundee Museum of Transport funding request. It's for noting.
Thank you. This report provides an update on the Dundee Museum of Transport proposal and give the committee further detail on how the council's contribution, the £20,000, will be used to support the project to progress. And councillor Crookshack, please.
Thank you, Convenor. This is a question for the officers. I mean, has anyone been able to look at the, the building? If I recall, way back in 2019, yeah, it would have been 2019, an application was put into the regeneration forum for £23,000. And it was supposed to be for upgrading the works on Dock Street, the premises on Dock Street. But they weren't going to be using the money for that. So they asked for, if it could be used instead to buy steel girders to keep the roof up because it was near collapse. And I'm, I'm just, and plus, the, the Heritage Trust had withdrawn the offer of funding. And so I'm a bit perplexed as how this is back on the agenda and if the officers have seen the building and to see what state it's in and if the money's going to be well spent. Thank you.
Mr Hamilton, do you have an answer on that, please?
Convenor, yes. And there's a number of reasons why we are interested in this project. So certainly the, the former tram depot building on Forfar Road that is proposed to be the home of, the permanent home of the Museum of Transport, it's a listed building. So we have an interest from that perspective in doing all that we can to try and support finding an alternative use for that property to prevent its further deterioration. We're also involved from a building standards perspective, if there's any reports of public safety, to ensure that the building is not a danger to, to members of the public close by. And we'll be working with the Museum of Transport over an extended period now to try and support their efforts to, to build a funding package that will deliver the regeneration of what you recognise as a significant building with a number of challenges. And the funding that has been agreed earlier by the Policy and Resources Committee supports the Museum of Transport to develop the, the necessary information that will be provided as part of future applications for funding through the Heritage Lottery Fund, Historic Environment Scotland, and potentially the, the Scottish Government's Regeneration Capital Grant Fund. So we are aware of the condition of the building and we're working with the museum to try and ensure that the project can be delivered and it is a further asset that can be added to the city's tourism draw.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Hamilton. And Bailey Wright next, please.
Thank you. I'm just thinking perhaps I should have declared an interest because I actually love right across from it. And to be quite honest, I actually love the building. It's a beautiful red building or a red brick building, which is really, I've been happy to live here for the last 40 odd years, looking at that brick wall, which I love. But the building itself has fallen into disrepair and it is looking pretty sad and run down. So my question is, will we be spending enough money to actually bring it up to scratch?
Mr Hamilton, do you want to answer that again, please?
Convenor, I think the, the funders of the total project in allocating any money from their own resources will require to be persuaded that it is a project that is sustainable on a number of counts, one of which will be that the building is brought back into use, particularly, I'm thinking, the, any funding that might come from Historic Environment Scotland, who are the custodians of, of buildings of, of architectural merit. So they will be keen to ensure that the, the restoration work is done to a standard that will ensure that the building has a reasonable life. Other funders will look at different sustainability arguments. So Heritage Lottery Fund will have that in their mind, but also then the sustainability of the museum proposal itself. And the funding that the council has committed will support the development of the business plan that will be key to those applications for other funding sources.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. Is that okay, Bailey Wright?
Uh huh. I just hope that we're not spending a lot of money and then not having an end result because that would be a shame.
Thank you. Bailey Scott next, please.
That was useful, the update from Mr Hamilton about the, the, the project and where it's sitting at the moment as far as funding and so on goes. I really just wanted to say that I think that the, the current Transport Museum is a, a real hidden gem and it's got a potential when it moves up to the Maryfield Depot to be a, a real top notch visitor attraction. It's a place I go to quite often and, and bring visitors to, to see whenever I can. So I'm, I, I think hopefully that it will be money well spent by the council and that we do everything we can to assist the organisation with its approaches for, for funding from outside organisations.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. Councillor Lynn, please.
Good for that, Vice Convenor or Deputy Convenor. Yeah, I think we're, we're actually really lucky that, that, that building's still there, probably 50 years plus since the last tram terminated there, which is well before my time in, in Dundee. I'm really pleased to see this project moving forward because I know that a couple of years ago, there were major questions about the funding. But it looks now that with the sort of money we're talking about, it will be, be delivered. And we already have the VNA and the Eden project on the way. And I think it's really important that the benefits from the massively increased numbers of people will have to the, to the city, particularly when Eden's completed, are, are spread throughout the city. I think ideally it'd be great to have a tram from the city centre to the new museum, but I, I don't, I don't think finances would, would allow that. But what I'm really pleased about as a Maryfield Ward member is about the, the benefits that I think will, will come to Stobswell and to Albert Street in, in particular. Because I think, I know, know that the estimated visitor numbers are 60,000, which is a big increase on 18,000 visits to the, the current museum. But I think that's probably a wee bit on, on the conservative side. There's many and varied shops or shopping experiences in Albert Street. They'll all be looking forward to the, the opening of this museum, as will the wider community. So really pleased, as I say, to see this going forward after the uncertainty in the past. Thanks.
Hi, Councillor Lynn. And I'm sure all the members share your hopes of a massive generative boost on the High Street and the Maryfield Ward. Councillor Short, please.
And I'd just like to echo what councillor Lynn has just said and perhaps offer him a coffee at the tram that we've got, just off the Muddy Gate, if he fancies a coffee at the tram, because we do have one, it just doesn't go as far yet. But I, I equally would support him getting a tram up the, up Albert Street. However, seriously, I, I'd like to really welcome this funding and the support already that the Museum of Transport have given to the new headmaster at the Morgan. The relationship there is already building incredibly well and there's lots of opportunities for them to work within the community. The new board that has come in are much more community orientated, which is obviously excellent, as they're lending a lot to the Stobswell area. And I think that red brick wall that Bailey Wright looks at, I, I totally agree. And I'm looking forward to when the whole area comes back to as it should have done in days gone by. Because like many people, I do lay a little bit of claim to fame. My grandfather was one of the clippies on the, the trams and we donated the, the badge from his heart to the Transport Museum. So I'm sure there's lots of us in the city that do have our stories about the, the tram museum and the trams and the Transport Museum in general. And it's going to be from the tay to the top, Maryfield is the place to get your experiences in the city. So great stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Short. And as I said before, I think the tram depot was a unique part of Dundee's heritage. So I hope we can all support that tonight. Councillor Rendall, please.
Thanks, Stephen. Councillor Rome, sorry. And yeah, just to say, from memory, I think that, that members unanimously backed this allocation of funding previously from the additional 1.1 million that we were getting. So really, we've already said we want to do this. But in terms of the Transport Museum itself, I think it's an amazing project. I, I think that the volunteers who have built this up from pretty much a tiny wee attraction to what it is now. And if you look at the, the comments on TripAdvisor and, and other sites, reviewing sites, it consistently rates higher actually than VNA, I'm sorry to say. And whilst it's fantastic, we have the VNA and possibly the Eden Project, big attractions coming in, I think we need to remember that homegrown attractions like Discovery Point, Verdant Works and now the, the Transport Museum started off with, you know, tiny amounts of funding and built themselves up. And that this amount of funding that we're putting in, which is minute in terms of, you know, the money, for example, has been given to other attractions, will really help them to attract other funds. So that's what it's there for. It's, it's going to get them much further down the road of being able to save this magnificent building, as Bailey Wright says, and make sure that it's preserved for years to come, as well as having another super visitor attraction for us out with the city centre. So as, as councillor Lynn said, yeah, that, that it'll draw people up to a different area of the city. So I can see nothing but good things coming out of this. Thank you.
Hi, councillor Rendall. And I think it's a very important point that members have previously backed community projects. And I think this is a very small amount of money, as you say, in the general context of the council, that could have a massive benefit to the wider community and the specific organisation. Given I can't see any further comments or any comments the contrary, can this item be agreed? So nodding, thank you very much.
Item eight, Christmas visual displays tender received. This is for approval.
First, I'd say thank you councillor Rome for standing in there. And I thank the members for their support as a trustee of the Museum of Transport. I appreciate your support on that. And I'm sure the rest of the trustees would welcome that as well. Sorry to jump in there. The report tenders receive projections content over in City Square in December this year. Any comments, questions? The thesis is agreed. Thank you.
Item nine, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
Number of tenders here, clearly in the report. Any questions or to officers? The thesis is agreed. Oops, sorry. Councillor Cordell.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to, to welcome the, the space.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to welcome the spend, the Bright Ferry Gateway Enhancement, to give it its fancy title. And I wondered if officers could maybe just elaborate a little bit more on what they intend to do with the soft landscape and what we are going to be looking at when it's complete.
Thank you. Mr Martin, are you on call tonight?
I am on the call, Convenor. Thank you. Thank you for the question councillor. I don't actually have the details of the actual soft landscape and specification and such like, but I'll let you use with the engineers that are involved with the project and get some detail and come back to you on that councillor Caddell.
Okay, thank you.
Right, councillor Neil. Anyone else? No, take this as agreed. Thank you.
Ten, tenders received by head of design and property. Again, this was previously approved and is for noting.
This is clear for noting, already agreed. Thank you very much. Next, please.
That takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
That'd be acceptable to everyone? Yes, let's see that. No objections. Thank you very much. And that's the business for our city development this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening colleagues. We've got a fair number of significant and important items to discuss tonight, so we'll just get straight on. Tracy.
The first item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in any item?
Are there any declarations? No. Okay, that being the case, we'll move on. Oh, sorry, George. He's been taking less than enough time.
Aye, thanks. Item seven, Tayside Meal Centre. I'm not sure if myself and Bailey Roberts and others have to declare a non-financial interest or not.
Thanks councillor McGurfin. We'll take that as read in terms of that item, but as you said, non-financial interest. So I don't think that will cause you any issues for the actual item. Okay, any others? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Tracy.
Okay, that takes us on to item two, a national care service for Scotland consultation. You are asked to note the position.
This is just an update and obviously since the agenda was issued, you'll be aware that there has now been an extension to the deadline. So it will be able to consider the contents of that consultation and bring a report back in advance of that revised deadline. No questions or comments, so I'll take that. Oh, sorry, Bailey Wright, I'm going to have to be more patient this evening.
Bailey Keenan is also indicated, Convenor.
Oh, thank you. There must be a delay on my side.
Bailey Keenan first.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. He was, I didn't see that, so it's not come through my mind. But Bailey Keenan.
Just to really ask that when officers prepare the briefing that they're going to be giving us, that they take into account all the potential finance aspects of it all as local potential areas of local government are being dismantled. You know, whilst I welcome a human rights based approach to health, I think that's to be welcomed. Some of the other things that might disappear out of local government might leave the rest of local government financially strapped. It'd be also, it'd be interesting to know whether there will be some other pension pot that's produced and whether it'll have any knock on effect of individuals perhaps being transferred or otherwise out of the local government pension scheme and into something else. And as to whether the numbers would have an effect on the pension pot in general. So I'm hoping the officers will be able to put that together so as that we can take these things into account when we get that briefing.
Thanks Bailey Keenan. I think officers will obviously try and support all politicians in Dundee with the answers that they require. I would probably caution that the officers might not have all of the answers to all of the questions you might have, but I'm sure they'll look to support you anyway that is possible. And the other important thing to say is this is a consultation. So the fact that we are being asked for our views, as is the rest of Scotland, is really important because we can offer our own insights into what we think will work best or what won't work best. And hopefully that will then result in some tangible action, which will hopefully form the basis for a national care service that we can all get behind. So with that, thank you. I'll go on to yourself now, Bailey Wright.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Obviously, can I say that I agree with some of the soundbites that are in these proposals? And I certainly welcome the briefing that officers have set up so that we can have a look as councillors and so that we can hear our views and they can get them passed on. But I do have some concerns about how the actual consultation will be done. That includes the views of the voluntary and the third sector and carers and other groups. I mean, everybody should really have an input into this. This is such an important consultation and it's so important for the services to go forward. Or is it just a case that maybe the government are just expecting everybody to log on and sign up or not? There's also our local groups in Dundee. How will we be consulting locally? We are constituents in the groups in Dundee because they need to sign up, you know, to these as well. And can I say, I'm asking about how we'd be looking at aspects of the services and also the charges that we make for the services. Is it possible that these services could be free at some point in the future if it's going to a national service? I have concerns and I think we have to make sure that our social care staff are protected and that they're valued and make sure that they have good wages and conditions. I'm concerned, and it'll be interesting to hear from officers, but what does a national care service mean for Scotland? What does it really mean? To me, it means the demise of local government as local authorities, we're going to lose these services. And they're so important to local people. So I have concerns which I'll be voicing at that point in time, but thanks.
Thanks Bailey Wright for your comments there. I will ask officers just to come in to, again, reiterate, I think, the point I was making. You did mention about you have some concerns around national care service. And I suppose the key thing there is we all want to understand what the final outlay, what the principles and the framework which underpin that will look like. I think it's important to recognise that it was in both your manifesto and mine, Bailey Wright. And there is a commitment to explore how we deliver a national care service that is based upon the principles of fairness and responsibility and making sure that we get it right for every single person that requires that service. And I think that's a unanimous commitment and one that certainly we both stood for election on. But with all of that, of course, I'll go back to the point that it is a consultation. We are being asked for our views. It is a public consultation which is open to individual views. So as well as a council response, it's perfectly reasonable for individual IGBs, individual members and members of the public to submit their own views in support or otherwise. And I know that that will be well received. And I think that was the reason for the extension to the consultation. Not least because I think there was unanimous political support for an extension to allow us to really think about what we would like to see in terms of the service, but also to ensure that there's adequate time to engage in all of the communities and representative organisations that you've mentioned as well. Just on that, Greg.
Could I just come back on that and say, well, I hope, I hope the public, the general public and all these groups that we're expecting to hear from, do actually log on to the website and voice their opinions as well. So hopefully that will be done to encourage people to do that.
Thanks Bailey Wright. I've certainly seen adverts and I think there's a duty on all of us as well to ensure that we are helping communicate that message. But with that, I'll just ask Greg, the chief exec, can you just come in and touch upon Bailey Wright's point in terms of that wider consultation within the city?
Yes, thanks Convenor. So in terms of the consultation, we are promoting the consultation document via the staff internet site for staff. So that again, they can take part in it. Scottish government at the end of August have released what they're calling an easy read document because the consultation document that we're filling in is quite a complex document. So there is an easy read version which uses different pictures. In terms of some of the specifics, Bailey Wright, regarding charging, what it will look like in staffing, I think there are questions that we need to ask within the consultation document because it's not clear within what's been published, whether or not a national care service will indeed employ staff or will indeed, it will commission staff from local government. So there's areas as part of the consultation document where we will be asking for some further information. In terms of that wider sense, then we'll use all vehicles that are available to the local authority to encourage partners, third party providers and the public where possible to participate in the consultation document. And I think that extension to the second of November should hopefully help people participate and actually feel that they're able to articulate their views over as part of the overall consultation document. Given some of the, you know, proposals that are included are quite diverse and different to what we currently have in place. But it is a consultation document and again, officers are happy to support elected members if they need that going forward. And we've got dates in the diary for briefings. And I know the IGB members have briefing sessions in place also.
Thank you very much Greg. Seen no other questions or comments on that, so I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Tracy.
That takes us to item three on the agenda, revision of Dundee Health and Social Care Integration Scheme. Again, you are asked to note the position.
Again, I think this is self explanatory. Is there any questions or comments on this? No? Okay, I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much.
Item four, suicide prevention strategic update. You have a report before you.
This report is obviously quite timely and also a really important update for elected members across Dundee. It gives a committee an overview of the strategic arrangements for suicide prevention in Dundee and the collaborative developments that are happening across Tayside, as well as noting the update and the publication of a toolkit to support the development of local area suicide prevention action plans. The report remits the chief officer of the Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership to come back to committee with the draft Dundee Suicide Prevention Strategic and Commissioning Plan, once this has been refreshed, and the draft Tayside Suicide Prevention Action Plan, once it's been finalised and a report regarding the outcomes from a suicide prevention stakeholder event, which is planned for November twenty twenty one, all going well. I can see there's a number of elected members looking to come in on this item. So first of all, can I just invite Bailey McPherson?
Thanks Convenor. Just a question for officers in relation to the stakeholder event. And in particular, I was just really wondering how we, what efforts are being made to reach out to as many organisations and individuals? And I'm thinking particularly of people with lived experience, but also third sector and so on. I'm just really wondering how wide the net is being spread because the fundamental point is that this will help enable the refresh of the strategy and commissioning plan. And I think it's very important to try and get input from as many organisations and individuals as possible.
Yeah, thanks for your question Bailey McPherson. We do have Arlene Mitchell, who's the locality manager, of course, and Linda Graham, who's the clinical lead for mental health on the call this evening. So can I thank them for their patience and stamina so far as well? Can I just ask them to perhaps come in, and I should have done this before asking you to come in, Bailey McPherson, so apologies, and maybe set a little bit of the context around what we're reading this evening, but also if they can address the fundamental of your point as well, Bailey McPherson, in terms of that wider conversation. So Arlene, Linda.
Thank you Chair. I think you covered the context for the report very well. The only other area that I would have added was around the Scottish guidance around setting up suicide action plans within areas. This guidance has been particularly helpful in terms of us being able to look at this as a measure of our current approach and governance arrangements, but also guidance which will support full engagement. It has some particularly helpful guidance within it. In relation to the question from councillor McPherson, can I reassure you that we have quite a broad network in terms of engaging with people within the city? So at the moment, in addition to our statutory services, we're linking with DVVA, our Healthy Minds Network, which has a large number of local people engaged now, but also our health and wellbeing networks through community planning partnerships. So we're trying to look as widely as we can in addition to our colleagues within Perth and Kinnross and Angus.
I'm grateful for that. That's very reassuring, Arlene. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Arlene. Should also just offer Linda the opportunity, if there's anything else you'd like to add at this point, Linda. Your work is very involved in this area.
Thank you councillor Alexander. No, I think Arlene's covered everything that we need on this point.
Great, thank you very much. Bailey Wright, I have you next.
Thank you, Convenor. Obviously, as a member of the IGB, we have looked at this. And obviously it's a good report, but there were certain questions asked officers at the time. And I think I'm going to ask them again, if you don't mind, because part of the stats does say that nearly a third of all probable suicides were people aged between forty five and fifty nine. The forty four to forty nine age group has the highest probable suicide rate of any age grouping. This represents a shift in an age profile. In the late nineteen nineties, the largest proportions were people in their late twenties and early thirties. And this is a shift in age profile, but roughly the same generation of people. And if I could actually just give you an example, and please don't laugh, because if you could imagine that if I was twenty four in nineteen ninety nine, I would now be forty six now. And at both times, my generation were reporting the highest suicide rates. And I was just wondering if there has been any work done to see if this is a coincidence or does that data track over the years? Do local suicide figures reflect that same shift in profile? If that generation are consistently more likely to report the highest rates, what work is being done? You know, to find out what would work and why.
Thanks Bailey Wright. No, it's certainly a pertinent question in terms of the demographics and the challenges there. And I think we all know, you know, you're more experienced than I am in such things, given your experience over the years, involvement with health and social care as well, that suicide is a very complex issue and that the issues that people face on a daily basis are complex by their very nature and the spectrum of those mental health needs and issues are quite challenging. But I'll just invite officers to come in. Arlene, can you perhaps come in?
Thank you for asking the question Bailey Wright. Similar to IGB, I'm going to ask Linda to give our response.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you, Arlene, and thank you once again, Bailey Wright. For committee, Bailey Wright asked this very pertinent question at the IGB. And it's often summed up in terms of people talking about suicide rates amongst Generation X. And I took advantage of being asked the question previously to go off and see whether I could reach some more definitive conclusions about why this phenomenon kind of exists. And I'm sorry to report the answer is that there is no definitive theory around it in that people will be aware that thinking about suicide constantly demonstrates the fact that it's a multifactorial phenomenon. There are gender issues, there are issues in terms of deprivation, addictions, access to the lethality of means, et cetera. What we do know is that what Bailey Wright nicely explained to you is that there appears to be a cohort of people who are maintaining a higher than expected suicide rate over time. And one of the main sociological theories around that is that changing in expectation for that generation is particularly pronounced, particularly the move in gender roles, for example, and women entering the workplace much more than before. However, for every theory that's offered, there's also a counter theory that provides some support for alternative explanations. So I'm sorry to say that whilst we know the phenomena exists, we don't have a good definitive reason as to why it exists. And in the absence of that, And in the absence of that, I think what we do is we continue to target our suicide prevention measures as broadly as we possibly can, but that we continue to look for opportunities where we can reach particular groups. So people will be familiar with some of the work that's taken place in terms of different approaches for gender, because we think some of the reasons behind suicide is different. We know different things appear in the demographics. So I think Bailey Wright is right. As a local suicide strategic planning group, it will be well worth the effort in us looking at that cohort to think about whether we need to do anything differently than we have done up until now.
Can I say thank you, Linda, for that? That was very useful. And it's good to see that you've actually done something about it because I just thought it was strange that it was the same generation.
Thanks very much for the question, Bailey Wright. And thank you very much for that comprehensive response as well, Linda. Councillor Duncan next.
Thanks, Convenor. Yeah, it's a very interesting, comprehensive report about what's obviously a really painful and tragic topic. You know, I'm sure we can all think of people who have been in some way touched by these things. It's so in some ways, you know, I'm not surprised to see at four point one point two that, you know, Dundee has a higher than national average of probable suicides. And the explanation is put forward that that is probably due to deprivation. And I think, you know, we've all sat in these committees and heard a lot about, you know, Dundee does have problems of deprivation, which we're trying to deal with, you know. But there's no denying that I think, you know, it is a factor. But what actually jumps out at me from the reports is that four point one point one, it says that around about three quarters of probable suicides are actually by males. Now, I think one of the speakers just touched upon this briefly, but I think there's, to me, there's such a disparity between the genders. I mean, and I do appreciate that there's many reasons why someone may end up, you know, perhaps taking their own wife. But my question really is, not to try and explain why this is so, because there's probably so many different facets to it. But the question really is, are we doing enough, do you think, to target resources towards the male segment of the population who do seem to be striking way more at risk of taking this extreme course than others?
Thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. And I anticipate that it won't necessarily be an easy response because, as I said previously, it's such a complex issue. I think I'm very conscious that there are a variety of different supports, not least within N H S Tayside and some of the other excellent kind of programmes and projects that are underway. But there's also an incredible amount, which I know has been done across all of the communities in Dundee. So things like Andy's Man Club, for example, where it's bringing together people who occasionally have difficulty with their mental health to talk about that in an open and collaborative way, I suppose. And reducing that stigma that's very much associated with mental health is absolutely integral. Because there is, it remains stubbornly so that men are often less likely to talk about these problems, I think, in my personal experience. And less likely to access services at the stage in which they need it. And I think there's still a job to go in terms of addressing some of those points. But I know that, you know, from an officer perspective, there's a hell of a lot proactive work that's been undertaken to try and, you know, reduce that stigma and ensure that people access the services that they need at the appropriate time. But I can see that Vicky has put her hand up. So Vicky, if it's on this particular point, I'll just bring you in.
Thank you. Yes, it was just to respond to that point. And I think the component parts of the national strategy, one of the most important parts of that is to ensure that access, to support, access to advice and access just for somebody to talk to at a point of crisis is one of the most important things, particularly with the male population. So there's lots and lots of work we're doing to do that. And there's obviously other aspects of the report which responds to how many people come to our attention because it's sometimes through emergency services, which is why we've developed the emergency response vehicle for people in distress. And that's why we're also developing the brief interventions as well across the city. But I would suggest that every single one of us has a personal role to play here. And it's that we have, we're open to the signs that we see with all of the people that we come into, we have interactions, whether that's through our families or through our working lives. And that we give people who wouldn't ordinarily ask for support or even voice how they're feeling, the opportunity to talk. And I know that I certainly do that with my son's generation, with all of his friends, and also for my own peers, just to make sure that people know that if they do have a point of crisis, there is always somebody there who they can turn to and is willing to listen to them. And we can all play a role in that respect.
Thanks, Vicky. Very good point there. We have all got two ears and we can all use them. Arlene and Linda, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of just the point that was made there?
I think the point around quick access is really, really crucial that Vicky makes. And some of our approaches around the Community Wellbeing Centre, for example, it will be really key that our stakeholder group that we set up is as broad as possible and that as many citizens of Dundee are involved in shaping how that looks to make sure that it's very accessible. Also, the initiatives like Andy's Man's Club, Andy's Club is really, really important. Anything that uses football or different activities to support younger men, for example, is a way into that kind of support. And the only other point that I think I would make is that I think I've been really, really pleased to hear that we've looked in particular at psychological support within schools so that we can maybe break down some of that stigma for boys in particular at a really, really young age. Linda, just going to check if there's anything else you might have added.
Thanks, Arlene. Again, another kind of completely crucial observation from councillor Duncan. And I don't want to risk drowning in committee and statistics. But one of the things that we know is that we need to be cited not just on people who sadly are successful in their attempts to take their own life, but there is also a much larger number sitting behind that in terms of people who attempt to take their own life. And that's where we start to see the gender gap narrowing. And in actual fact, there are many more women will engage in acts of self-harm in comparison to men. And our reach, although we're talking about suicide prevention, needs to be able to deal with that entire cohort. Because of course, we know that one of the best predictors of people who will go on to take their life is having made previous attempts. So I absolutely endorse that we need to take a gendered approach in the widest sense in order that we can see the differences between the cohorts. But there are probably actually many, many similarities between the two that mean that us taking a unified approach is equally valid.
Thanks very much for all of those contributions. And I will give the final word to councillor Linn.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I agree with everyone that's been said. I think it's really important that we provide as many listening ears as possible to people who are in distress and at risk of suicide. And as Arlene has said, you know, there is work going on to make sure that the number of listening ears indeed increases by way of the ambulance service, crisis ambulance service, the distress brief interventions, and of course, the Community Wellbeing Centre, they'll, I hope, they'll certainly increase the number of listening ears. It's important that we make sure that people will access these services and make them aware of them. But just one thing I was quite interested in, four point one point four. As we all know, it's notoriously difficult to predict suicide. If we could do that, we'd be able to prevent a lot more suicides. But I'm interested in the research. I can't pronounce that that word heuristic can maybe predict who is going to attempt suicide or die by suicide with ninety percent accuracy. It says that that's of limited use because it can't tell us when the person is going to commit suicide. I would have thought it'd actually be very useful to know that someone has a ninety percent chance of committing suicide at some point in their life so that we can make interventions. I'm just wondering if anyone could maybe give a bit more information into this research. It's probably not local, it's probably national or international, but if anyone could just say a few words about that, I'd be interested to hear.
Thanks, Ken. Linda, Arlene.
Councillor Alexander, it's probably one for me. And councillor Lynne is correct, it's not local research by any manner of means. It's mainly international research. And the people are probably more familiar with the idea of algorithms rather than heuristics. But in effect, it's a way of saying that you can have computer programs and every time there's a new event, you can update the learning on which it bases the next ability to predict. So it's almost like a live database of information which informs the next prediction and the next prediction. So it learns as it goes. So absolutely, I suspect in years to come, our risk assessments at a clinical level will be very much assisted by this. But the developments are still a long way off as having it in day-to-day clinical practice.
Thanks, Linda. I think that was helpful response to councillor Lynne's question. There's no other questions or comments. And I think that was a really helpful set of questions proposed by members. And thank you to Arlene, Linda and Vicky for their contributions as well. So with all of that, I'll take this item as agreed unless some detail, otherwise. Okay, thank you. Tracy.
Item five, Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategic Update. Again, you have a report before you.
Again, a really important update for elected members that directly relates to the item before. This report confirms that the mental health and wellbeing strategy continues to be such a high priority for the area. And we know that and we've referenced that in several debates, I would say, within the chamber, but the virtual chamber at least. Plans for improvement both locally and across Tayside are ambitious and are being escalated at unprecedented scale and pace. And I hope that that continues. And I'm sure all elected members will join me in trying to ensure that that pace of change and that improvement continues long into the future as well. Members are asked to note the contents of the report before us and I will just open it up to elected members in a moment. But first of all, can I offer Linda again and Arlene the opportunity, if they would like to add anything at this point?
I think a couple of points to note that members will have seen in press recently that we have identified a site for the Community Wellbeing Centre. We're particularly pleased about this and we were very happy to confirm the site at South Ward Road, which is a Hillcrest building. This will be adapted for our purpose over the coming months. There's also been some additional progress following the completion of the report. So the report refers to the ambulance vehicle with paramedics and mental health staff. Last week, there were four mental health nurses appointed for the purpose. So whilst it's operational in part at the moment, we will be able to move to full operation within the coming weeks. The distress brief intervention service, we are at a stage in the tender of a sort of standstill process which allows organisations any appeal. But we will be following September the thirteenth in a position to announce who the successful organisation are. So again, that will become operational during October, which is slightly delayed from our initial anticipation. We also have been working on refreshing our local mental health and wellbeing strategic plan in light of our experience through Covid and another, a number of other factors. Members will also have noted that there's been a progress report received by David Strang around the independent inquiry into mental health services in Tayside. And the report came with some positive notes around progress in Dundee and some areas for further action. Linda and I would be very pleased to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that. That's really helpful. And again, I think it's important just to, you know, raise those points of progress, particularly the paramedic mental health response vehicle, which, you know, quickly up and running, I think is really important and will provide a vital service whilst we're still progressing with the wellbeing hub that's also being created. So things are certainly not standing still whilst we wait on a building being complete. There are other services and other assets that are coming into play to support that wider body of work. So I think those points are particularly well made. Thank you, Arlene. I've got a couple of questions from members. So Bailey McPherson first.
Thanks, Convenor. A very useful report indeed. And very grateful to Arlene for her contribution there. I have a question and I want to make a little point as well. But first of all, the question, and it's really around the very welcome progress towards the Community Wellbeing Centre. I think this is something that has been of great interest to many of the elected members. And we're very pleased to see the building being identified, as Arlene alluded to. What I'm really wondering is, my interest is really around how things progress from here and in particular, how it will operate fit in dovetail work with existing services. And I think if I could be so bold as to say, prior to its opening, it would be very useful to have a briefing or indeed visit to the centre, just really to go over the detail of this. We want this to work and we know everybody does. But this is a really, really positive development. And I would just be very keen indeed that elected members are kept appraised of progress towards this and how it will work in practice in relation to existing services as it moves forward towards hopefully opening in March of next year.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I think I've had some conversations as well as councillor Lynne in that regard. And I think you can take it as given that elected members will be provided with more detail in advance of that opening. And of course, I think we'll want to have that opportunity, Covid safe of course, but to visit the premises once re-appropriate works have been carried out. And I can see Arlene nodding. So I'm going to take that as your agreement as well, Arlene, in that regard. And so I think it's a really valuable point. And as you rightly say, I think I can speak on behalf of all of committee that when I say that, you know, we all agree what this is trying to achieve and that this will be an incredible asset in terms of just taking forward that mental health strategy. So I want to make sure that all elected members, given that they have been supportive throughout the process, are given that opportunity to reflect on how it's going to operate and ensure that we're all aware of, you know, how it will dovetail, as you rightly say, with the other services that exist. You had another point, which happy to go back.
It was a point that you'll be unsurprised because I mentioned it at the group leaders meeting. And I know it probably rests with the I G B and not us, but I'll put it out there anyway. And the Walk and Bledder Group suggested that the centre could be named after Lee Welsh, whose parents, Phil and Lesley, have been so dynamic in their desire and their continual lobbying in relation to this following the tragic death of Lee. And I'm not looking for a response on that. I did mention it at the group leaders meeting. I simply put it out there. But I do understand that that will rest with the I G B and perhaps not with ourselves. Thanks, Convenor.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. And you're right, you did raise that very point. And I think certainly Greg gave that commitment to have a look at that. But as you say, I think it does rest with the I G B. But thank you very much for your question and your point. I'll just go to councillor Crickshank. Oh, no, I won't. Sorry, tell I. Georgia, forgive me. It's councillor Flynn next.
Okay. Thanks, Convenor. Just to welcome their support as well. It's got some key interventions in it, which I really welcome with that. I would see the benefits coming from that being related to some folk of really serious mental health issues. One of the important part is the early intervention. And go to four point one four, you've touched on it yourself, Convenor, with the paramedic mental health response vehicle. Can we get a bit more information on that with regards to, is this something that's new across the country? Can we get a bit more information on that with regards to, is this something that's new across the country and focused in the city as a trial? And you've also mentioned, Arlene, at the start there, with regards to you've employed now the four mental health nurses in the full operation. What do you define as full operation, if that's okay?
Thanks for the questions. Linda, Arlene, I'll let you decide who comes in first.
Okay, thank you. We were approached by the Scottish Ambulance Service to see if we would be interested in having a vehicle locally. There were other areas of Scotland who had been part of a pilot, and Scottish Ambulance Service were clear that they didn't want us to be part of a further pilot, but to look at implementing some of the learning from other areas. There was found to be significant success in people who may have otherwise attended A and E, you know, receiving a much, a much more swift mental health response by means of a vehicle. For the last couple of months, it's been operational over weekend nights with paramedics alone who have a mental health training. We chose to start it in that way while we were looking to recruit mental health nurses on the basis that we thought that support would help. You know, even without the mental health nurses, we're now in a position where we can be fully operational. There already has been some learning around the couple of months that the vehicle's been in place. I'm going to ask Linda to come in.
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, councillor Flynn. Before I forget, I'll address your question about hours of operation. So the plan is that we'll move to seven days a week. And the operational time will be 6pm till 2am. And that comes from a really robust analysis of Scottish Ambulance Service calls over lengthy periods of time, and also the learning has been primarily in Glasgow to date. So as Arlene mentions, our paramedic colleagues have been sort of working probably over the last two months in the car without the mental health nurse input. However, what we have done during that time is established the pathways that will be the ones that will be crucial when the car is fully operational. So the learning associated with this tells us that we are in effect diverting very significant numbers of people who would otherwise be at the emergency department are being delivered care in their own home environments. And of course, the reason for having paramedics involved in a project in addition to being the 999 response is they can provide physical care along with the psychological and mental health care support that's provided. So we have the ability to treat both the body and the mind at the same time. But what we're actually finding is that it is by and large a mental health response as opposed to a physical health care response. And the other learning is that we're certainly not seeing any trends that suggest the 6pm to the 2am slot is is not the one that we should go with.
Good. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I think that's really important, actually, the response time. I think getting there as soon as possible is obviously one of the school benefits. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the question. Councillor Crookshank, sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you, Convena. I'm very grateful for this report coming forward to committee. And I'd like to to echo Bailey McPherson's sentiments. And also just to say that in terms of the Labour Group would be supportive of being named after Lee Welsh. And I know this is acknowledged that this is not for this committee, it's for the IJB, but I would hope that would give that would give it some serious consideration, given that we are where we are now. Helped by Phil Welsh and Lesley campaigning and others such as Mandy McLaren, et cetera. So yeah, their tenacity in doing this has brought this almost to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Crookshank. You're right, the tenacity of the campaigners that you've mentioned and some others that I'm sure will be very live to all of us, and also the work of things like the Fairness Commission, who have done work on mental health as well, and I know have presented to the IJB. So, you know, the phrase we stand on the shoulders of giants, and many of them are good campaigners in the city as well. And also, I think, you know, again, I'm very thankful for the unanimous political support that's been received and the officer input in order to move forward with these developments as well. So thanks very much for your comments, Georgia. Much appreciated. I'll move on now to Bailey Wright, please.
Yeah, just really to titillate what people were saying. I think there was a huge campaign by Lee's parents to raise awareness. And let's, let's put it like this, there's none of us unless you've gone through it know how it feels to actually go through that. And I think as a member of the IJB, I would certainly be happy to put that forward. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much for that, Bailey Wright. I see no other comments or questions. So again, can I thank Arlene and Linda for your responses and your participation as well. It's really appreciated. And thank you all for your questions. So with that, is this item agreed? Thank you. Tracy?
Item six on the agenda, supporting climate commitments ahead of COP26. You're asked to approve the recommendations.
Again, I think these are self-explanatory. And again, you know, given the actions that have already been taken and delivered with support of committee, I think it's really important that we continue to push ourselves to achieve more and to stretch ourselves to deliver a carbon neutral city as early as possible. Now, these three separate items or three separate pledges, I suppose declarations in themselves are meaningless. It's what we do on the back of them, which is important. So very supportive of our signing up to these, particularly the C40 cities, because I think it's really important that cities play a very active role in setting out not only the challenges but the opportunities and how we can really deliver some inroads. When we're talking about climate change more broadly. And the fact that this campaign seeks to sign up 1,000 cities from across the world, and Dundee will be one of them, is really important. The Edinburgh Declaration, of course, and the Glasgow Food and Climate Declaration are equally as important in terms of ensuring that we've got integrated and sustainable food policies and looking for that prominence of biodiversity and ensuring that we're doing all that we can on that. So the important thing for me is what we now do if committee is in agreement tonight on these three declarations and turning them into tangible actions. First question I can see is councillor McCready.
Thank you very much, Convena. I mean, I very much want to echo what you've just said yourself there. I think it's important. You know, it's important that we, you know, the symbolism of Dundee agreeing these three documents or to sign up to these three documents, these three commitments tonight is very important. But what is much more important is what we do on the back of that. I think that's really crucial. So I do welcome that and I welcome your comments on it because I think, you know, we do COP26 is hugely important. It's hugely important for Glasgow. It's hugely important for Scotland. But, you know, it is much more important for the whole world that we get that right, rather than we have a, you know, a nice event in the city of Glasgow, which I'm sure they all have because lots of nice things happen in the city of Glasgow. Indeed, I was born there. So it's, I'm sure that it's been downhill ever since, or it's improved greatly since I moved to Dundee. I'm not sure which one it is. But I think the commitments that we're being asked to make today are very important. I think that, you know, a lot of people do fear that things like COP26 are just a focus for a couple of weeks and then we move on without huge amounts actually happening. So we need to be clear that the commitments we make here today are important and that we're going to do stuff and that things will happen as a result of them. So I think that's welcome, Convena. I think that one of the questions I wanted to ask was, I think we have previously talked about carbon accounting and things like that. And I just wondered if if there's any way of us moving towards anything like that in terms of what we do as a as a council and indeed how we could lead on things like that for the city. Because I think we've got a huge role as, you know, as we've done on things like living wage to lead the city. But and I think sometimes the focus is on the council, but there are other there are other aspects of the city, including large bits that are also in the public sector that could equally be could equally be focused on and should be focused on, like the NHS T side and indeed the universities and college, for example. I think that the C40 cities raised to zero commitment, a note that we're committing to at least one action. I just wonder how we're going to decide that and how we're going to report on that, Convena. I think that would be, it would be good. I think for all of these, it would be good to get some kind of, you know, consolidated kind of climate action report at some point. I know we get things like that, but just to make sure all these things that we've signed up to are actually showing that they are meaningful. The Edinburgh Declaration, I think, is welcome and the city should support it and look at ways to show support locally and to encourage others to take action. And I think the crucial one in some respects for me is the Glasgow Food and Climate Declaration. It's important. We need to recognise that no matter where you are in the world, you do have a right to food in international law. Many of our ways of producing food, you know, and I say this as the Convena of Dundee's Fair Trade Forum, many of our ways of producing food and important food have an impact on broader society. And we need to look at the impact. We need to, you know, recognise that we are indirect employers as to how your dinner got to the plate tonight. You know, we are responsible for for the impact that that may or may not have had. And we need to act accordingly and take the climate emergency seriously. So that, you know, and it's basis of things like that. And I was pleased that, you know, the council agreed last year that we, that the right to food should be incorporated into Scots law. I think that's really important as well. But we need to recognise that you know, we sometimes think this is about people in the global south who can't feed themselves. But, you know, I think as the pandemic has demonstrated disgracefully, there are people in this city, indeed, there are people in the city of Glasgow, people who will be on the fringes of the COP26 conference who struggle to feed their families. So I think we need to, you know, we need to change that and take these things seriously. But I think on the whole, really supportive of this, Convena, very much welcome your comment at the start that it is about what we what we do on the back of this and that, you know, we're looking for the council to continue to take action on this. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor McCready. Really welcome your comments there and I would agree wholeheartedly. And of course, I think we all recognise the fact that climate change has a compounding effect, particularly on issues of inequality and those that are already challenged in so many ways, both within our own country but beyond our shores as well. So if you look at the impact, particularly in poorer nations who often don't have the ability to address some of those issues, we need to do more across the board. And I think you're absolutely right. It's absolutely key that we monitor what we're doing. One of those suggestions that it was myself that put forward was around the accounting that you referenced, the climate accounting. And that's not progressed as quickly as we would have hoped, but partly because of the practicalities of being able to assess all of that. But I think there's a couple of things I would say, just in response to your comments, again, all of which I welcome. The fact that even this year, we've made some significant progress in it. I think it's important to touch upon some of them. We've expanded significantly our climate change team, and I'm looking at Brian Harris. As I say, this is climate change manager and creating that capacity to support the wider services within the council. We've now got our citywide climate change leadership group, which is chaired by Ian Gillespie at the University of Dundee, of course, looking at issues beyond just the ability of the council to influence, because it's really important that we involve the wider city again, in a similar approach to what we talk about when we're talking about community wealth building. Equally, climate change is an issue that impacts on every single community. And there's a variety of different mechanisms for reporting back. And I think I would probably point back to the Climate Change Action Plan, which was developed and coordinated again through Brian's good offices and had the support of some of those key sectors and businesses and organisations in the city as well. And part of that will be about, you know, ongoing assessment of how we're performing in our city and ensuring that those actions are deployed in the way that we expect. We've also increased our capital programme with £22 million more on capital investment. And we're looking to hopefully get going with a participatory budgeting model which engages with communities but focused on climate change, because again, there is much more work to do. So I think we've got some great examples of, in many ways, best practice or leading practice. But there's always much more we can do. And I hope that these declarations help accelerate that work, accelerate the pace of that work, but also bring some of those organisations and communities together in a way that we're perhaps not doing at this point in time. But just on your fundamental point, I suppose, in terms of that assessment, that leadership being shown, and also your specific point on how we account, I suppose, for our contribution to climate change. Can I perhaps just invite Brian in the first instance to come in? Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Convena. Just to pick up on councillor McCready's point on the carbon accountability, that is very much an issue that we are facing both in his organisation and as a city on how we tackle that challenge. So one of the things that we have been working on is essentially a city's emissions platform called Climate View, where they're the only local authority in Scotland piloting us with some colleague authorities in England. It's a Swedish company who have been doing a lot of work for the Swedish government and Swedish municipalities and have expanded across Europe to the UK. This tool, which we kind of hope to launch at COP26, and we're just in the final stages of testing it, allows us to essentially put in our targets, our overall city targets for climate change and look at possible policy scenarios and interventions that will be required to achieve different targets if we were transitioning our sectors of energy, transport and waste to net zero. So we're very keen on that. And it's very much relying on available data and getting support from the partners across the city. The second part of that is essentially ensuring that we can become a net zero organisation. And carbon budgeting is one of the areas that we'll be looking at with the new resources that we have. So we're just about deploying another member of staff. There'll be a technical specialist post that will support the council, support council services and support our partners at looking at carbon accounting, carbon budgeting. In terms of our reporting and how we do that, as councillor, as I said, there is a number of platforms that we can report. So we are already as an organisation, a member of the Global Covenant of Mayors, and we can report through their platform, which we will do. Our main reporting platform really is the Dundee Partnership because it is a citywide plan. And the actions from the Dundee Climate Action Plan will be promoted, will be presented to through the Dundee Partnership and also through the Dundee Climate Leadership Group. Yeah, that's the points I want to touch on there.
Thanks, Richard. Okay, I think it was councillor Randall next.
Yeah, thank you, Convena. It was just to say that I welcome Dundee becoming a signatory to all of these declarations pledges. And I agree with councillor McCready that this is a commitment, a commitment for the council to actively be seen to be doing things towards becoming net zero. And I'm particularly happy that in one of these areas we are, we are working towards already becoming one of the UK's Sustainable Food Places, which is all about access to all aspects of the food chain and becoming sustainable. And we're doing quite a lot of work in that area already. You know, there's a number of community growing allotments, growing up all over the place. And we do well on providing access to food and becoming one of the UK's Sustainable Food Places will definitely help us towards our ambitions in the climate change area. So really welcome this and commend it to the committee.
Thanks very much for that, councillor Randall. I see no other hands or questions. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Tracy?
The final item on the agenda, item seven, Tayside Meal Centre. This is for approval.
Again, self-explanatory. So is there any questions or comments on this item? I'm giving it a little bit longer because I'm always too quick to jump here. So no, there's no questions or comments on that. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you all very much for your participation. Have a good week and I shall see you very soon. Take care. Thanks, everyone.